All right, welcome everybody to the June 26 budget hearings. We're going to reconvene the budget hearings. And with that, I'll recognize Julie Pearson.
Julie Pearson, Pennington County Honor. You have in front of you a new set, Mark. We were going to write pink across here for you so you could see, but I forgot to do that. So with the budget in front of you, with the board's directions from the last budget hearing, there are four budgets left for remaining discussion, and they're set for July 3rd, court administration, court-appointed attorneys, ANN-appointed attorneys, and the public defender. On this budget attached, those budgets were treated to the same method that we applied for every other. There was no FTE increases from public defender. The others are all contracts. They were treated the same by whatever they submitted for request was put in their original budget request, which was the first draft that you got, and then made the equal cut to all the tax portion of their budget. So that's the way this budget is prepared. This budget includes all the new FTEs at the levels they requested and their program revenues. It uses no stored CPI. It raises reserves up to 19%. And to do that, every budget, mostly in the general fund, needs to take a 2.47 tax burden cut. Now, when I sent this out to the department heads, it was not, they weren't told to resubmit their budgets with that cut because you can see what that amount would be. So what the board needs to do today is if you would work from this draft and tell me any changes that you want made. I did make one suggestion on the county fire fund. You do have $5,200 available in stored CPI to apply to that, which would allow you to work through and keep the same level of budget using that stored CPI, and then that budget would hold with its cash reserves usage. You could use that budget through 2020 with, and then you could, no, through 2019. You could make the decision on an opt-out in the year 2020 for the 2020 June primary, so you wouldn't have a special election effective for the 2021 budget. So it's, it could get us to the point. We put the 2.47 budget cut against the fire fund, but you would need to use the 5,200 to get you through that or make, can that equal to budget cuts additional this year and next year to get us to that point so we don't have to have a special election? So you'd save about $40,000 that way. As with an opt-out, it will raise your levy in county fire, which again is paid by everybody outside of municipality. The rest of the levies are going down. The county fire levy goes down again because the revalued dollars are more percentage than the CPI. That's what drives every levy down. If you applied the 5,202 stored CPI, it would raise your levy from .083 to .085 or 20 cents per hundred thousand of value. Now realize, when you put an opt-out in, that will raise the levy in that fund. So you're going to have to either drastically reduce that budget or put an opt-out in, which is going to raise the levy. Just so we're clear, when you increase the taxes, it raises the levy. And I know most boards don't want to do that. So that's kind of what you're looking at. Motions and decisions needed to approve this budget, approval of the FTEs at whatever level the board desires. That's because I put, the direction was to put the worst-case scenario, if you will, in so you could see what the maximum amount you would have to reduce by, but you still haven't made official motions to that effect. You would need to tell me what percent you want to lower the tax burden of the budgets by. Again, reaffirm that you want to raise the reserves to 19%. You would need to also direct me to, or reaffirm that you want to only use current growth and CPI except for maybe the fire fund. So those are what I need to hear from you before we can finalize a provisional budget. All of those, except for the use of stored CPI in the fire fund, are what you have in front of you. Now, I'm sure you have departments that want to talk to you this morning about this, and we'll leave it to that. If there's any questions, or if I misunderstood what you wanted me to prepare for here.
Okay, I just want to do a review before we do all this. Thank you, Julie. You know, when we started out these budget, the budget process, you know, we come to the conclusion, when you came to us, that we were going to accept the budget as presented as a starting point.
Yes.
And that's how we proceeded. And then as we went along, that the FTEs, we weren't going to approve until a meeting like this today.
Yes.
And so some of the numbers come through, and stuff's got presented, and requests went out to the department. So I understand you guys may have some, how do I want to word that? Reservations on how the budget is set for right now, but this isn't set. I think we need to hear from the other three departments before we actually do a provisional, which I think is going to be July 3rd. We're going to hear the rest of them. But I think what the board wants to do is move forward and give Julie some direction as far, maybe, I don't know what some of the commissioners are looking at, but I'm sure you're ready to point some numbers at and be able to throw out some more. I think, I know my goal is, is to kind of reduce the tax burden, the 2.4 down, reduce it down somehow or another, but we won't know until we get to that point. If we get the department heads coming up here and speaking today, I would just ask that we, let us get through this part of the process first and give you some good accurate numbers, and then we'll have another meeting to be able to address any further needs from there, would be my suggestion.
Yes. This was to give you the worst-case scenario if you were going to fund all the FTEs and not making any more specific cuts.
Yeah.
But just so you knew, on the four budgets that have yet to be heard by the board, I treated them the same way.
Yeah.
So that you still had the starting point from draft one. But this gives you where to go if you decided to approve it with the motions you've made and the motions to date.
Okay.
Because it does include all specific motions that you made through the budget hearings, which were mostly to the outside agencies to approve very specific amounts.
Yes.
And then, since those were specific motions, additional cuts weren't made to those, but you still could.
Yeah.
Like, take for instance, the solar conservations. They were specifically set at last year's levy, but when I, or last year's budget amount. But when I prepared this, since that was a specific motion, I didn't override that with an additional cut. So you could treat them the same as the others and still institute the 2.47. So we'll kind of have to work through those to make sure that we get specifically what the board as a whole wants us to get. But yes, this is just to show you where you could be at this point in time.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is proceed like we talked about with the FTEs, and then we'd talk about, I'll open it up to some other discussion. But I think from Julie's presentation, is there any discussion? I think Mark wanted.
I just have one question.
Mr. DeSanto.
Mr. Chair. We take the 5,202 stored CPI for the county fire. It's going to go from .083 to .085. If we choose the opt-out, how much will that raise it?
A lot, almost double it.
Almost double it. Okay, thank you. That's all I need.
At that point. What this would do is get you so that we don't have to have that special election.
I understand.
Okay.
Any further questions for Julie on the pink sheet before we move on to going through the FTEs? See none, we'll move forward. What I have is our budget summary sheet, and that's where I'll start. On the top of that list is buildings and grounds FTEs they requested, four. Is this the board at this point in time with the new budget that you see? Is that still where you want to stay, or is there any further discussion on the floor?
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
If they have four, it's 193, 932. It's my personal opinion that for sure, two at 91,000. I don't know if we have to make that a motion, but my opinion, they at least need two.
So you're making a motion to, and that's what we need, folks, is a motion for?
Two.
You're making a motion for two?
Yes, sir.
For buildings and grounds.
And that'd be 91,000, sir.
Okay.
91 even?
I think that's what you had told me, Ms. Julie.
I think that's what I remember.
Is there a second?
And Ms. Julie, sorry, Ms., okay, good, sir.
Waiting for.
I'll second, but I want to hear from buildings and grounds.
Okay, there's a second for discussion, and.
Chair. Just so we know, it was for a technician and custodian, not a specialist. Because technician and custodian is what we are proving for the 91.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Bussker would like to hear from buildings and grounds. Mike?
Mike Cool, Buildings and Grounds. At our hearing, we, you know, we laid out what our budget was. The request was for four personnel. As I indicated when I was offered the position of new director, we had two weeks to prepare the budget. You know, we are still trying to get, I'm still trying to get familiar with how things work on that side of the department in terms of maintenance. But understanding that the board's desire is to cut costs as much as possible, you know, I did suggest that we could move back to two. I had asked if there was an opportunity that we could be allowed to come back and request additional FTEs if we find that it's necessary, but trying to work towards only having the two initially approved with this budget. That would suggest that we try and maintain that budget in there. As you heard from Mike Peterson, who's been with the county for 32 years, and I'm relying heavily on his thoughts at this point in time regarding, he thinks that we definitely need the four personnel. So what I would request is potentially maintaining our budget number, and then we will strive to not utilize those two FTEs in whatever way we can, and we could have further discussion later about what the need was. I just don't feel like I have a good enough understanding about what our needs are going to be yet that I can say wholeheartedly that we can make do with just the two. That would be our goal ultimately, would just utilize the two, but I would hope that we have some understanding. We're in the process of a lot of change for the department regarding these facilities coming online, and understanding implications, all of that is really hard at this point, especially when I'm taking over a new role.
Thanks, Mike. Julie, do you have a?
This is when you guys get into trouble with your reserves, is you do what is suggested, that you only do the approved two, but yet they can come back for two more next year. They either need a delayed for the, a delayed implementation, but you still should budget for it. Otherwise, you're automatically coming back. He's not going to come if he doesn't need them. He's going to come in the middle of next year, and he's going to say, I need two more FTEs, and then you're going to have to come up with 96,866. So it doesn't do your reserves any good when you delay this type of decision. So you can either, you need to decide, you can either do two now, two later, which would adjust it somewhat, but don't go promising that he can come in and halfway through 2019 and, yeah, you'll give it to him.
Thank you.
Because it just keeps pounding away at your reserves.
Thank you. I think my thoughts on this, Mike, is if things move forward with the treatment center being transferred over across the street and things go smooth, we're going to have less operations, less maintenance over there. I think there's going to be some additional cost savings with that. And I think as you work through that, I think you're going to find a better understanding of what the needs are and so forth. But I think at this point in time, I'm in favor of the motion of two at this time. I don't know if, is any other discussion from the commission, are there thoughts on But I do agree with Julie. I don't think we should budget it and then say, try to get two, and then, that's just not good, not good practice. I don't see any further questions or discussion. So we'll go to a vote. The motion on the floor is to approve two FTEs for buildings and grounds. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with three ayes and two noes, one for Farabee and one for Mr. Bussker. Next, we come to city county alcohol and drug programs. They are requesting eight additional employees, and as it was presented during the budget process, it's going to be at, budgeted at 214,449. With the new revenue, it's going to be brought in with those is 280, so it's actual gain. Does anybody?
Be a motion to approve?
I'll second for discussion. Is there any discussion on the eight?
Well.
Mr. Bussker.
I'm going to vote for this, hesitantly, because, yeah, it might be good this year, but, and I'm not going to be around in two years when you, whoever is here, going to face the dilemma of funding eight employees. And that's going to cost, I don't know, half a million dollars that you're going to have to come up with. But I won't be here, so.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes with two noes from Mr. DeSanto and Mr. Farabee. Next, we come down to the planning new FTE. Now, as was presented in the budget, how this was, there's some realignment of the funds, one FTE for 64,574, and there's new revenue for 65.
Motion approve.
Moved for approval by Bussker, seconded by Hagcock. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion passes with one noe from Mr. Farabee. Next, we come under, come to state's attorneys. They have a request for two FTEs at 155,835 with no additional revenue to support. Is there any discussion on those? Mr.?
Morning, Mr. Chair. Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. I believe that we left behind, for those of you who were not able to attend last week, some of the figures that we were presenting in terms of the caseload that our attorneys are enduring at this point. So principally speaking to Mr. Farabee and Mr. DeSanto, what I will tell you is, we don't have control over how cases are heard in the circuit courts. The formality of them has changed distinctly since I was a baby prosecutor in Pennington County in 1992, and the number of cases that each attorney is carrying has gone up. So we're doing more on each case, and we are dealing with more cases per attorney. The bottom line is, I believe that attorney spot is one that is necessary so that we can walk into a courtroom and be prepared at a very baseline level. I think it's important to help us retain people. We don't have a salary structure. We're at the very bottom of the pool when it comes to salaries, legal salaries in western South Dakota. I've got friends that I ran into this weekend at the Republican Convention who are delegates, who are state's attorneys in places where they have a one-person office, and they're making the same thing I am or close to. So I think our salary structure is such that we have to at least show our employees that we're trying to keep up with them or trying to give them the ability to have a realistic balance. I will tell you, going back to Marcy's law and the supplement that you passed last year, or the year before, really, the, at the time, we came to and told you that that was going to be about six people if we just did it by the numbers. We brought on one whose job became to look for technology and innovation for ways we could streamline the process, so we could hold it for FTEs. We did that. We did it successfully. She is now going to be working a great deal on body-worn cameras, which is, again, another thing that other people have done that we now have to deal with. Now, I'm very much in favor of the body-worn camera program. I think the way the sheriff and the police department did this was very responsible, and we like what happened in the test room. But the bottom line is, that's a whole new set of discovery, both to provide to the defense, which is where we need the secretarial help, and for attorneys to review. Reading a report might take you five, 10 minutes. If you're going to have to go watch the video, which you damn well ought to, because I guarantee the defense is going to. Again, we're putting greater burdens on each attorney on each case. So I have submitted this because I believe that it's important. We are utilizing one other spot from that with the medical issue that we've got right now, and we're hopeful that that will fall away. So there is some possibility that we'll be able to realize some savings, either repurposing or actually returning the FTE. Once we've had about six months under Marcy's law, I think we'll have a much better idea of how that's going. But right now, in theory, every person who was an opt-out could still opt in, and if they do so, we've realized virtually no savings from the amendment to the Constitution. Realistically, I don't expect that to happen. I think our gallant's doing the technological side of it. We'll very much be able to step over and take care of the other things. So ultimately, what I think we're going to end up with, because remember, we didn't repeal Marcy's law, we modified it. We still cover corporations, we still cover low-level, nonviolent misdemeanors. So there are definitely things we're doing that we would not have done three years ago that are now constitutionally required. So I certainly am available for any questions that you might have, but as I said, I hope that the documentation we left behind from Mr. DeSanto and Mr. Farabee got to where it was supposed to.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any questions from the board, from Mr. Vargo?
Couple of questions.
Mr. DeSanto.
Mr. Chair. Mark?
Hi, Mark.
Do, will this extra, with these extra FTEs, will it eliminate the overtime?
It should, I mean, eliminates a strong word, because every once in a while, there's one person that does something, but it should cut overtime distinctly, and we're going to have close to, between overtime and contract employees, close to $100,000 this year. And I mentioned that last time, that's a good point, Commissioner DeSanto. That should eliminate that. And that is, I believe, a much less efficient spending of $100,000, because you've got new people. Every time you have a contract person, if you get a good one, they're not available in six months when you might need somebody again, because they went off and got a full-time benefitive job. So we're hoping that will eliminate those. Now, we've been able to pay for it because we're attorneys down right now, so we haven't had to come to you for any kind of supplement. I wanted to point out for the benefit again, Mr. DeSanto, Mr. Farabee, we did cut 28,000 out of our witness budget, just looking at what we've got coming up. We think that that was an appropriate one. But I also wanted to point out, and I was kind of reminded when I was reviewing this last night, we had increased that because of the possibility of a capital case. The previous year, we actually spent 13,000, which was roughly, I think, just under a quarter of the actual budget that you had given us. We don't spend that just because we have it. And so I think that that's the way, I'd like to point out to you, that's the way we approach our budget generally. We don't, we're trying to make sure that we are cautious, and that if we need something, we don't have to come to you for a supplement, but we're also not spending it just because it's there.
Oh, Chairman?
Mr. Chair, one more.
I'm sorry.
Follow-up?
Follow-up. Second question, actually. It's more of a question regarding the body cameras. It seems to me it should reduce the amount of time you have to spend on a case because it provides more solid evidence that you don't have to come up with ways to argue. When, you know, film doesn't lie, it's on film, you're not a whole lot of argument about that. Now, I'm not an attorney, so obviously I don't know about standing in court and making those cases, but it seems to me body cameras will reduce the amount of time we got to spend.
I would imagine that it'll reduce the number of jury trials that we have for exactly the reason you just expressed, but in terms of reviewing it, what I would do before on a DUI, say, if one of them, well, DUIs were videoed mostly from the car cam, so that's a bad example. Let's take a domestic situation that results in a resisting arrest. I am hopeful that those body cams will show what we've always said, which is that our law enforcement is acting appropriately, and this is what the defendant did. But in terms of how much time I put into reviewing that, I've got a one-and-a-half-page report, I read it, and I trust my officer. Now hopefully, the body cam will persuade people from trials, because they'll actually see themselves where they maybe even didn't remember just how they were acting that night. And so hopefully, that will reduce the number of trials that have to be where we're challenging what an officer has written or what the officer has said. But in terms of reviewing it, my attorney in reviewing it is no longer reading a page and a half, they're reading a page and a half and watching half an hour of video, or 45 minutes, whatever amount of video is there. So I think actually it'll increase your prep and decrease the number of times you go to trial. Unfortunately, trial is less of a common thing than it used to be. And I say unfortunately, because I think we lose a training ground there. I pointed out to folks last week, we had, at one point during my tenure here, if you take the top four people, the people that are doing the most serious felonies, the least experienced of those was 10, 12 years in the office. If we lose a person that I have every reason to believe we're going to lose, the most inexperienced of those four, the two most inexperienced will be four and five years out of law school. We're losing a lot of folks, but again, the fact that there are other people who can pay better and who do less work. So it's part of the reason I think that we need some additional people. It's one thing to say that Scott Rettzel, 25 years in, can handle X number of cases. Whoever I replace him with probably isn't of that caliber, but at the very least, isn't of that experience and can't handle the same caseload.
Thank you.
So those are the reasons that I'm asking you for that attorney position, and on the secretarial side, we're hoping we can accomplish something with the transfer from Marcy's law, but I think it's a little early to start banging on that.
I think Ms. Hagcock had a question?
Yes, I visited with Mr. Vargo this morning. I'm in agreement that you need the attorney, and that I think the one FTE covers a lot of that with the overtime. And the secretary, I think that's one thing that we had visited with, that maybe you could, you know, rearrange some other areas in order to take care of the ones. you know, rearrange some other areas in order to take care of the one secretary. So in my case, I'm, I believe you do need one attorney, and that the secretary is someone that you could, you know, add to other areas. And I know, I know you're tight, but our budget also is pretty tight on a two-point-four-seven cut this year. And we want it to br- come down to a amount where most departments, you're gaining in some sense, and I know with workload, but I keep hearing from every department, the workload is pretty high. So, um, to be fair, I thought the attorney was fair, and the secretary was something that, um, this year, in my case, I, I wouldn't be in agreement with.
And I appreciate you coming up and talking that through, and I will let the other commissioners know that's how I would prioritize it.
Thank you, sir.
I think the attorney, we're in virtual crisis mode. The secretarial out there, they're working their tail ends off, but, you know, we were trying to figure out ways to shuffle and, and cover.
So Ms. Julie, what would be, if it was just one attorney and we eliminated the secretary, did you had those two numbers break, broken out of the one fifty-five?
No, but I'm sure Mark does.
Do you, Mark?
Well, that's.
Or he can get it to me.
I believe we do. No, I'm afraid on our number, we combined them, but that's going to be.
Majority of it.
Yeah, that's gonna be about, I would say, probably
Hundred.
two-thirds. So right around a hundred would be the cost of the, the county as opposed to the one fifty-five that we have in there.
Okay.
And we can absolutely get that to you this morning.
Any further questions from Mister Vargo? So you got a good idea what that is? The new attorney was roughly about a hundred?
Hundred, yes, sir.
Is there any motions on the two? Request for two FTEs?
Could be my motion for the one attorney, and the state's attorney for FTE of approximately a hundred thousand.
Okay. There's a motion.
Second.
Second, for approval of an attorney for the state's attorney's office? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes with two noes from one from Mister Farabee, one from Mister DeSanto.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and, uh, to the board, we have an all-office meeting that I need to be part of, but I will have an intern watching here. If you need me on any other portion of the budget, if you have questions, uh, you can just send her for me.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll be in the building.
Next on the list for FTEs is dispatch. And they are requesting four at a two-twenty-five, seven-thirty-seven total. And I believe the income they have is two-twenty-five, seven-thirty-seven, so they have the income to cover it from. Or is that, that, was there a shortage of forty?
Forty thousand.
There's a shortage where you're taxing for that portion, if you refer back to page one on line thirty-two. The tax support of that under general is fifty-five thousand, two forty-six. The tax, we don't levy a tax under dispatch fund, we levy it under county general. So that's why the revenue shows the same amount, is because the taxation comes from the general fund.
Okay, so it would be additional fifty-five.
Yes.
Is there any discussion on dispatch, new FTEs? We had good discussion on that.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
I thought it was forty thousand, three eighty-eight. How, how'd we get up to fifty-five, Jewel? Julie?
I had, um, there was that discussion. I had Ted re-verify that, and the fit, the numbers that were in the original draft were correct, according to him.
Okay.
So you're still getting four for additional fifty-five?
Fifty-five thousand.
Any discussion?
Yeah, that'd be my motion.
Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Hagcock to approve the four, and seconded by DeSanto. Discussion, Mister DeSanto.
Mister Chair, I just want to point out, after we got our report from the department head the other day, with overtime up by sixty-six percent, and, uh, twenty-one percent increase in the number of calls that we're receiving, this, this particular request makes sense to me. It, uh, the, the stress that those nine-one-one op, um, dispatchers go through is tremendous, and so.
Thank you, Mark. Ms. Hagcock, do you have a comment?
No, I'm good, sir. Thank you.
You're good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think that takes us through our FTEs. So Julie, now you have the numbers for those. I'll open up to the board for any discussion, and any other part of the new drafts that Julie had presented to us. As you, as you can see, it, it shows we moved up our reserves to nineteen percent. The modification, I'm sure our tax burden cut of two-point-four-seven is gonna change. It was just slightly with those, uh, FTEs, but I don't think that's gonna be a whole lot to make a difference. So in order to get, uh, the two-point-four-seven tax burden cut, I think we're gonna need some recommendations from the board, or some good discussions.
Can we, Chairman?
Ms. Hagcock.
Can we, uh, discuss the county fire first?
Sure. Is that okay with the rest of the board? With the recommendations, so, uh, one of the motions and decisions that we need to make from the county is the use of stored CPI, tax dollars for county fire fund. Is there a discussion for that, Ms. Hagcock?
Chairman, um, Ms. Julie, the other day I asked if we were taking two, two-point-four-seven off of the fire board, and you said you weren't. And then this shows that we did, right? By six thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars?
Yes.
Okay, so.
You made no specific motion to that difference? That was the direction. I also took it off of the highway, which isn't tax-supported at all.
Yeah, I guess that's why I asked you, because I would've made that motion at that time, probably not to take it off fire, since they were already short in the first place, but that's then done, um.
So what you're needing to get through the budget on the fire board is to make, have a motion to take the stored CPI of what, Julie?
Um, it's five thousand, two-hundred-and-two dollars at this estimate at this point.
I'll make that motion for discussion. I don't know if I'm going there, but just for discussion.
Okay, there's been a motion.
Second for discussion.
And a second for discussion to use the stored CPI of five thousand, two-hundred-and-two to help fund, uh, the fire board. Motion second of discussion. Anybody have? Mister Farabee. First you got, you got asked to be recognized. I just looked at you.
Obviously, I totally disagree. The Julie and I, the author and I have been over this for I don't know how many years, but only those of us rural pay for county fire administration. This municipality, whether it's city folks that live in fire districts, don't pay. So until they pay, we shouldn't be taxing the rural residents some more.
Thank you, George. Any further discussion?
Chairman.
Mrs. Hagcock.
So you have two-hundred-and-thirty, uh, career firefighters in Rapid City, you have five-hundred-and-ten volunteer firemen in the rural areas. You pay, most people pay about fifty, sixty bucks to, uh, take care of their land in the rural area. I think, um, it's important that we keep this, uh, volunteer fire department going. They have said over and over again, these volunteers, that they want a fire administrator, that they want to move forward on that. It keeps everything organized for the rural areas, and this is part of that. Um, I think that's a small price to pay, and, and city folk do pay for fire and, and things too. We tax it in other ways, by sales tax and other things, so, I haven't, uh, I guess, went into all rural areas to see who wants to be taxed for fire, or who doesn't. But the, the issue there is, um, when you need them, they're there. So it's easy to say that people are taxed, but I can tell you, for what they do, they're worth every penny. They work very hard, and they're there when you need them, and they, they help each other through the other counties. So ask yourself, what happens if they go away? Who takes care of the fire? In the rural areas? So I think they do a great service for, um, what we get from them. And I don't know how we get there, but I, I would like to see that we could raise their levy and make sure that they're not worried about, you know, paying for what they need to at this point. I mean, again, that's five-hundred-and-ten people in those areas, and they do have fire districts that understand that they could opt-out and do other things, and those areas have, um, done that before. So people are saying that they want protection. So I guess I didn't understand increasing the two-point-four-seven on the shortage, and then coming back and asking for the CPI. So if we didn't increase the two-point-four-seven, Julie, do we still need to use the CPI funds, tax funds?
It's not an increase of two-point-four-seven, it's a budget reduction. You're talking two different things.
Okay.
The cash fund is what supports the fire fund.
Right.
As for asking what the other departments are reducing two-point-four-seven, you didn't ask. So the reason it was applied is it was an even Steven application. If you don't apply the same budget cut to fire, you will run out of money next year. The two-point-four-seven percent budget cut is sixty-two-hundred dollars.
Right.
And again, not asking any of the other departments what they would cut, they're not even, they're short in their fund balance just as much as the fire fund. If you don't make a budget cut equal to what you're gonna raise it, which actually doubles the amount, you will run out of money and have to decide something for next year's twenty-twenty budget, not twenty-twenty-one.
So the only option is basically take some of the CPI?
You have to take all the stored CPI and still make a slight budget reduction so that you're doubling the impact of the fifty-two-hundred dollars to be able to stave that off until twenty-twenty-one budget for an opt-out in twenty-twenty with a special election.
And I agreed with that, because that's basically, um, number one, um, told Jerome and the fire people on the fire service board that we would need, number one, to go look for, um, title-three funds, but like you said, that's just a, uh, um, Band-Aid, but they are doing that. Number two, that the opt-out, which I agree with Julie, probably wouldn't happen until twenty-twenty if you did anyway, to try to cover, so you didn't pay forty to sixty thousand for a special election for an opt-out. That way, too, they could, um, go around to the different areas and see, you know, and are people in agreement, are people in disagreement, so it gives them time. Bottom line is, um, I don't know how to get there, but I would hope this board would move forward on, on where it needs to go for funding for, until twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Hagcock.
Mister Chair, oh, George has a follow-up.
One more time.
Mister Farabee.
Let's, let's tax all the recipients of the service. It can't be any clearer. This has nothing to do with volunteer firefighters. It has to do with paying for fire administration. Now, if I have property in Keystone, or Hill City, or Wall, or New Underwood, and then I also have rural property, my rural property, I have two tax line items. A tax for the fire district, in my case, Hill City, and then I also have fire administration. My property in Hill City, I only have one line entry. So the folks in Hill City, Keystone, New Underwood, Wall, don't pay for fire admin. It can't be any simpler. Let's charge them for fire, if we're gonna have fire admin, let everybody that's recipient of those services pay for it. And the other counties that get services from our Pennington County Fire Administrator should kick in as well. Mead County folks get services, Soddo Custer County folks get services, free from our fire administrator. It's got nothing to do with the volunteer firefighters. It's got to do with fire administration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been.
Mister DeSanto's next.
Mister Chair, uh, just to kind of George, I understand where you're coming from. But I also take the numbers, that we're paying for the fire administrator, and I also know that at least the volunteers that I know are in, in favor of having that administrator. That makes their job a lot easier, and when I talk about making their job a lot easier, these are guys that if you take the money we're spending on the fire administrator, divided by five-hundred-and-ten volunteers, if we were paying those guys, which we're not, they're volunteers, we're paying them a total of five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars a year to show up at our house and risk their life to, to, uh, um, save our lives. And, you know, none of us know when, whose house is gonna burn down next, or who's gonna have a heart attack next, or what have you, but, um, I feel that the and, you know, I don't know, I guess we could take a, a poll, but I feel that the general rural population is willing to pay that five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars a year to have that, that protection. And to have the fire administrator be able to secure, uh, when we need equipment, he can take the, the whole group and go, okay, we need equipment. They were talking about SCVAs that they've just recently upgraded, which obviously is a very important part of firefighting. If it wasn't for the fire administrator working on getting the good deals and facilitating getting all those SCVAs all on the same page, so that the, the fittings all work, so that when they fill their tanks, they can all fill it from the same, uh, hookup. Without him, it would've been, we would've never been able to get it done, with all the different departments. We wouldn't have been able to get them all consolidated, so that they're all working with one unit to refill those tanks. So I think it's, it's an important thing. I understand your point, George, that everybody should have to pay for it. I do understand that point. But is that a, is that a, is that a county decision, or is that a legislative decision?
There would, um, if I.
Go ahead, Jewel.
I don't believe there, you can't tax in a city limit for county fire fund. It doesn't mean you can't ask them to provide support to the county fire fund from a municipality, just like you had the discussion on the school liaison. They can make a contribution, or they can, just like they, they fully, they don't fully fund the libraries, we have a combination that if we provide services to the libraries, we only do it to the level if the city provides funding. If the city doesn't provide funding for that library, the county doesn't either. You could, from the fire board, or the fire coordinator, make that type of revenue generation request if he's providing services in those towns. I don't know that, but you never know if Rapid City, who has their own and is taxing for their own fire, um, I believe they're the only town that does.
Okay.
I, I don't know if they would be receptive of a request to help fund that, but yes, you could ask them, and it would just be deposited in. We do it on many of our dispatch, detox, emergency management, they're all dealt that way.
Thanks, Julie. I think that's a discussion for a later time.
Chairman, I have one, one thing to say.
Hold on, we got.
Thank you. It's not.
I want to let everybody speak before we. I want to let everybody speak before we go to second. I should have done that before. Make sure everybody has a chance to speak before they speak a second time. Ron, do you have anything?
No, I, uh, I, I guess I, i- i- if the fire people in a district are, are the responsible party to fight a fire in town, uh, those people should pay. But I, I'm not sure it's not a legislative decision and not ours, so. But we do need to look into that, I believe.
Mr. Chair. I'm going to make one comment before I go to seconds. We've been, this is a pretty hot topic and as you know how we got here, we got here because there was a reduction in the levy when, because the, the reserves were too high from way back. And so that's kind of how we got here.
Right.
And so that's why I'm kind of in support of doing what the recommendation is and what the motion on the floor is. That's all I wanted to pass on, Ms. Hickok.
Okay, um, we had discussed this before. So you pay for the fire admin, you pay one point four FTEs. You get a secretary and a fire administration. He runs five hundred and ten guys. Okay? Then with the other money, it's repairs and maintenance and some of their equipment and some of their things that they use. And then the forty-eight thousand is their biggest, it's on supplies and different things that they have used. So let's be fair, you pay for fire admin on your mill levy, but your fire district, when he says he's being taxed twice, um, that's a vote, if I'm correct, Ms. Julie, to do a fire district. So some of those areas have opted in to pay more because they believe in, um, the volunteer fire department. So when you're taxed twice, the first time is where we had put the mill levy, the second time is a fire district. Am I correct?
I, if I may.
You're a mystery.
I, when you say first and second, I don't know the, the timeframe. We have orga- that whether the districts were formed prior to adding the county administrator.
Right.
Position on, but they have rights under law to form a district. They govern themselves and yes, they levy a tax.
Yes.
Some of the cities within those organized fire districts can pay a county fire district fee. They cannot pay a tax on county fire.
Right.
So first or second is, is a wrong usage of word. But yes, they can form a fire district for any specific area. It's a commission decision on the county fire fund.
So the county fire, I, I apologize. So it's county fire from us. And then they have districts like Hill City, when you're taxed twice, people voted on it.
They may or may not have voted on it.
Right, they did because I'm on the fire board and they did. When we had the meeting before, so they were taxed again because they decided they wanted more coverage or more, like when you were talking to Jeremy up here and he said, I opted out and I had to go in my district and ask. Do you remember that? I need more money. I need more equipment. I need more areas of coverage for my district. They did it. That's why if you're taxed again, a lot of times that the people decided that it was important enough. And if you look, there's a lot of them. So it is important to the people in those districts and those rural, rural areas enough not only to be taxed by county fire from us, but to add more to it because they believe in what these guys are doing.
Just a, just a note reminder, we have a motion on the floor.
Thank you, sir.
For approval, uh, of the CPI and the amount of fifty-two, the stored CPI fifty-oh-two for the county fire. Any further discussion? Mr. DeSanto?
Mr. Chair, I also wanted to point out that there are many calls, um, in the rural areas in which the city also responds when they have multi-departmental, uh, responses for larger fires and, and so forth. So, um, and I'm not sure, Julie maybe, um, do they charge us for that?
You would have to, in those cooperative agreements, I have no idea what, I, I don't have access to those. I don't know how they work.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll check into that before we get, do our, um, the actual budget, um, vote. But, but I believe that, that we do not pay for those additional responses. I think it's a reciprocal agreement. If the, if we have a fire in the city that calls for additional backup and manpower, that we send our volunteers, we don't charge for it. And if we have a fire outside of the city limits, vice versa. But I'll check into it, make sure and find out.
Okay, thank you, Mark. We have motion on the floor.
We don't.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Farabee.
Rapid City, obviously, is totally different than Hill City or New Underwood or Wall or Keystone. I'll stick with Hill City. Hill City Fire District includes the town of Hill City. So we all receive services from the fire district that was formed thirty years ago. Additionally, we rural folks pay for the fire admin. The city, Hill City folks don't. So there's two issues. One, do we need the fire admin person or fire admin function? If we need that function, then everybody that served by that function should pay for it. And that's not the case now. So we got two questions. Number one, do we want the service? And if we do, how are we going to pay for it? That's, everybody should pay for it. Right now, only those of us rural pay for it. And the folks in Mead County and Lawrence, or, 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 well, Lawrence County as well, and Custer County that gets services from Pennington County don't pay a dime, period. So let's keep the issues straight. My thinking has always been, if we're going to have fire admin, then all the fire districts, all the recipients of those services exclude Rapid City. Rapid City isn't part of this picture. But everybody that receives services then should pay for fire admin. The fire, individual fire boards, the Hill City Fire Board, the Keystone Fire Board, they're the ones that should kick in for fire admin. It shouldn't be taxed through the county. The only person on this board, the only two people on this board that could ever be in, have skin on the game are District One and District Four. You three folks in town, there's no way you can have any skin on the game. You shouldn't even be voting on this. It should be the individual fire districts across Pennington County that should decide, do we want fire admin? And if so, let them decide how to pay for it.
Thank you, Mr. Farabee. And this has been well, well, uh, debated and discussed. I'll remind one more time politely, we have a motion on the floor.
Yep.
Do we need more discussion?
One last comment, if you don't mind.
Okay, Mr. DeSanto.
Mr. Chair, in response to what George is saying, I'm not disagreeing. So what, the, the solution, I like to think about solutions. So the solution is, um, do what I did with the help of Sheriff Tom and go to these, these different areas that are receiving these, uh, benefits from our fire administrator and ask them. Ask them to pay for it. Ask them to kick in. I mean, that's, according to Julie, that's what we, that's our option and that's all what we can do. We can't have an election to vote on it and, and I don't think, and, and force it. Um, that's not in the rules or in the laws. So we can go to them and say, hey, you're receiving services, we'd like you to kick in a portion of, of this cost to, to defray, um, it from the, from the rural county taxpayers. And that's, seems like a solution to me and I, I don't mind going to Wall and New Underwood and the areas in my area and asking for that. They can say no, but if they say no, I don't know where you go from there.
I think those are great discussions and can be worked on after this budget hearing. We do have a motion on the floor. Everybody understands that. I'm going to take a vote.
What was the motion?
Motion is to approve the
Fifty-two oh-two.
Fifty-two oh-two from the stored CPI for the county fire fund.
Five thousand two oh-two.
Correct.
Five thousand two oh-two.
Yep. Shortened a little bit.
Which would
Not pick.
Raise their levy by approximately twenty cents per hundred thousand dollars.
Only if you take the two point four seven percent budget cut.
Gotcha.
It will be more than double that if you make a motion not to apply that cut, whatever cut we end up with at all to the fire fund.
We're doing what you say, Ms. Jules.
Okay, so now we're clear on the motion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Aye, aye.
One no from Mr. Farabee.
And I'm the only victim of this. There's no other person up here that's a victim of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's. Let's, okay, since we took care of that, let's talk about the reduced tax burden on the budget of two point four seven. And let's discuss the raising the reserves to nineteen percent. That's the, the things we need to do. Discuss. That's on our motions and decisions that we need to approve for the budget. Are, is there any other thing commissioners want to discuss, Ms. Hickok?
Chairman, just, it'd like, it'd be nice to see where we're at right now before we decide to talk, look at the reserves. Does that make sense? Leave where they're at until we decide where we're at on the cuts?
If I may.
Ms. Julie.
I tested it yesterday. The reduction of even a hundred thousand, which is less than you've made the cut, won't change that percentage by more than even a hundredth of a percentage. So you've cut ninety-one and fifty-five, so it may reduce that to a two point four six. It's just not sufficient enough.
So we're just throwing some things out. What happens if we decide not to take the nineteen percent goal reserves and go back to eighteen for reserves?
Uh, that would be that, um, I didn't make that. I can't tell you off the top of my head. I've played with that, but I don't remember what reduction you would have. It was a minus two thirty-nine, two thirty, you added, um, three thirty-nine, minus one fifty-five. It'd probably be closer to two.
Two's.
With the added CPI, wh- excuse me, with the addition of the, the additional cuts that you made this morning. That you can make the decision to not make the cut and use all the stored CPI.
Chairman, just, just a thought. Okay, so, Bustard, you asked about buildings and grounds. Their contingency is four fifty-one, eight seventeen and seventeen. It went to eight hundred in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen and went to eight hundred. Is the eight hundred, Ms. Julie, in the four million? Is that, the completed building was, I'm sorry, you don't. Four million, six, well, with the cut, it's four million, three forty-one, but it started at four million, six thirty-one, seven eighty-seven. Is that eight hundred thousand in that total or is that separate?
If I may.
Ms. Julie.
If you look at your budget summary, okay, two of four, the bond payments are like sealed contracts, so we didn't make the, the budget or a levy reduction to that. But we did to the major improvements and it's not a contingency, it's for major improvements. It's not the normal maintenance of buildings, correct me if I'm wrong with this, with this, but the buildings and grounds budget under county general is for major or for all the maintenance of daily type of expenses, utilities, cleaning, that type of thing. What's in the major improvement budget of eight hundred thousand was, um, for roof repair, cooler, those types of major projects that we are not building up a reserve for.
Right.
And if you notice, in twenty seventeen, we actually spent nine hundred and forty-six thousand. If we don't spend the eight hundred thousand, it reverts back to accumulated building, which it did take, um, it's a separate fund, accumulated building is under county consolidated by board motion. It is funded first as well as the fare. There are no reductions in those. And then the balance is what's used to fund county general. But it did take its two point four seven percent because it's not a contract. So it's shared in the reduction. So if you exempt that, it's another eight thousand, six hundred that general fund would have to. But yes, it took its share of the reduction in this budget.
So, Ms. Julie, they, so not only did they use the five million, three hundred and eighty-six in seventeen, they took another almost million for, um, completed building, basically improvement major. So they're up to like six million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand?
If I may.
Good.
The five point three million is your bond payments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Major improvements line is what's used for buildings and grounds for their major projects that are not foreseen type projects.
So then it was four, four million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, five eighteen and seventeen, plus the nine forty-six. When makes it almost six million dollars?
That we're levying under accumulated building, we levied, we actually spent six point three million. I doubt if that's what we levied.
No, I meant if you go back to line six in twenty seventeen on your front page.
That's your general.
That's what I'm saying. So in seventeen, it was four million, three hundred and thirty-four and major improvement in buildings was nine forty-six added on to that total?
Yes, the buildings and grounds under county general is your daily maintenance of all the buildings and grounds. What is charged to accumulated building by law are the major improvements or corrections that you have to make to buildings.
So basically about five million dollars is what we do for buildings and grounds every year for maintenance and improvements on the buildings. On the actual in twenty seventeen.
I'm, it looks like Mike's got some numbers for you.
I wouldn't use that term, but.
Mike Cool, Buildings and Grounds. I, I, I guess I'm just interested in clarifying the, the purpose of, of, of the eight hundred thousand dollars. It's one, i- i- it's looked at as one-time costs, uh, um, it's not ongoing maintenance of things. So like a, a roof replacement or a chiller replacement, uh, on, uh, that's how we would utilize that for replacing equipment as it reaches end of the life or a roof as it reaches end of life. Those kind of types of things, uh, in, in our regular budget, those are the ongoing maintenance things, you know, for going out and greasing motors, things like that, uh, to keep things running.
So, Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
So Mike, if you look at your buildings and grounds, your total operation is two million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. You have travel, you have supplies, you have repair, you have service and fees, all in that. Right?
Yes.
So the other is for basically your buildings, so am I correct? So about twenty-four hundred, two million, four hundred for, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out your three twenty-nine is repairs and maintenance. What are all those lines mean then? Supplies? Is it, are you saying that eight hundred thousand is above and beyond the supplies, the repairs? It's, it seems like you'd put that more in those areas if you had any capital costs or anything that you might might need or you're seeing in the future that would be an issue. It seems like it'd be more tho- those items, because it almost, it, it does. It looks like an eight hundred thousand dollar contingency over, over and above what you have for supplies, repairs or maintenance.
The, a- as I said, I mean, uh, the supplies and stuff would be replacing, um, piece, small pieces or somethings of, of equipment or going out and doing, uh, the consumer, using the consumables in terms of, you know, like I pointed out, greasing motors, uh, such things as, as that.
Right.
That the eight hundred thousands is using for significant per, one-time generally purchases at things. It's not an ongoing yearly cost to, to facilities. So as, as equipment, roofs, buildings, as soon as we finish building them, they start to age, they start to break down. We have to be continually replacing things all the time.
So.
And we utilize that money for that purpose.
So Mike, you have eight hundred and sixty thousand in repairs and maintenance and supplies before the eight hundred thousand in twenty nineteen? in twenty-nineteen in your budget.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have another, that's why I said, it seems to make more sense if I was doing a budget that I'd put it in there instead of making it look like a contingency of eight hundred. If you have capital costs or anything that need to be, you know, future projects or future areas, I mean, some, some's unforeseen, but you have eight hundred and sixty thousand right now for both of those, for those major things that you have going on. Am I correct?
We, we have that money is there just, just to keep everything running right now. That doesn't count, that doesn't count to replace, the, the, the eight hundred thousand dollars is used to replace major significant things as they wear out, they, they reach their useful life.
Okay.
So the, the, the total op, the operations cost is an annual renewing. We could continually pay for these things to keep things running all the time. So upgrades and equipment and stuff to, just to keep things running when we need to. But there are pieces, major significant pieces of equipment, uh, and significant pieces of buildings that will wear out over time and we have to, uh, replace them.
But we also have a bunch of new buildings and we're going to get rid of another building. So some of that cost seems like it would go down because we have improved, um, highway. We have proved, you know, we're getting rid of, um, the area over on, on La Crosse Street. It seems like there's, it, it would reduce somewhat because you're actually, with all the bonding, hopefully you have improved those buildings to the point where you shouldn't need eight hundred thousand still.
Well, what, what I would point out is that we have buildings now that are, uh, our jail, our energy plant that was generally built with the jail and stuff are all reaching thirty-year, are, are thirty years old now. And the equipment within those areas and stuff is beginning to, uh, i- it's at its end of life, needs to be replaced. So going forward, we're gonna have to, uh, we're, we're gonna have to continue to replace significant pieces of equipment. Even though we have brand new, some brand new buildings and stuff, this, this facility and stuff probably doesn't need a lot of investment, but there is signi- in that energy plant, there are significant pieces of equipment that are in need of replacement.
So when you're doing the jail and the kitchen, are you not replacing a lot of those things with it? Or you're just doing a specific area in there?
There, uh, we are replacing some pumps in the energy plant with that project generally. But, and we are adding some things that will serve just the kitchen in that portion of the, that portion of the building with that project. But we are not doing s- any significant improvements to the energy plant at this time. We are currently trying, we, we are currently hoping that we could acquire, but purchase a new chiller system that helps us make ice, that help us off, that which helps us offset, uh, costs during peak hours of operation.
Right.
Um, towards the end of this year. Uh, that's one of our, uh, goals, uh, we are looking at trying to do. But, um.
Thank you.
Those kinds of things are.
Thank you for the explanation, Mike.
Okay, thanks. So at the point that we're at, I think we need a break. I think there's some questions going on. Some people gathered a little bit of information.
Take the break?
I think so.
Ten minute, please.
Motion's been made. Second by Busker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion's adjourned.
That's actually, if you look at everything.
Okay, we're gonna come out of break. And I think, uh, Eric from Public Defenders is here to, that can give his presentations. And, and I think it's wise that we hear his budget presentation. And then we'll go back to the budget hearings. Eric.
Good morning and thanks for fitting me in this morning. My, and I don't know quite how I slipped through the cracks here, but I am requesting one and a half FTEs. And so I'll explain that. Went from thirty-two to thirty, uh, three and a half, or I think thirty-two to thirty-three and a half. And let me explain that, that half. I have two budget priorities, uh, this year. And the first is, uh, to try to maintain somewhere close to full employment. I have, if we're fully staffed, including myself, we have nineteen attorneys. Come next month, we're gonna be down to sixteen. We've had a position open since March. We've had actually two licensed attorneys apply. We've had twelve total applicants. We've just had a couple recent ones. So I think we're up to fourteen now. So hopefully we'll, uh, but, uh, have some good candidates. But we're, we're having a real difficult time trying to recruit and retain attorneys. We're having the same difficulties that you've heard from Mr. Vargo at the state's attorney's office. So what that means is we just simply can't handle the number of cases that come in. And so we have to start withdrawing from cases. And so that you end up paying on the court-appointed attorney's budget. So what I have requested is, um, a half-funded attorney position. The reason why is the same thing you heard from Mr. Vargo. So we can go offer attorneys or a law students, or if we have someone who's interning with us over the summer, offer them at the end of that internship to come start with us the next fall. I, I requested about thirty-three thousand dollars for a half-funded attorney position. I know Mark said he just doesn't need necessarily the money. We gave money back last year because we just can't maintain full employment. We, you know, we're not gonna maintain full employment of course this year as well. So if you're looking for a little bit of room, I, I, I'm open to a discussion about that. We've tried to get our budget with our salaries down as, as tight as we can. Our increases is slight for one and a half FTEs. We've lost a lot of long-term employees, so they, these cost us less. So, um, it, so what, so that's what we're asking for as far as that position. We've got, there's really a confluence of a few events with attorneys during the, after the two thousand and eight recession. A lot of college students went to law school because they couldn't find a job in whatever they just graduated from. That created a, um, an access of supply of attorneys. And so for a while, we had lots and lots of qualified applicants for positions here in the county and elsewhere. What a lot of those graduates found is they couldn't find, um, jobs and they couldn't find good-paying jobs. So now law school admissions, uh, tanked for a number of years. We've also had some changes with our state, uh, bar with who's allowed to, to be licensed as attorneys. They went from a, a cut square of one thirty to one thirty-five. So the graduation numbers were lower and bar passage rates were also lower. As low as fifty percent has actually created a credit crisis for our law school. So those things in combination have made it really difficult. So I'm really looking for a tool from the commission. We talked about this last year. I was worried about this last year and, and we're in it now, um, to help us try to maintain full employment. I'm asking also so that we can go and make those offers this fall. So at least next year, we might be able to have somebody that we know is coming in. The, the second, uh, FTE request that I'd made is for a resource coordinator. This has been something that's been on my long-term planning for a number of years. Often it's not our clients' legal troubles that are their chief concern. It's another aspect of life that if we could help resolve, um, they can be a lot of binding citizens. We, so many of our clients are facing either a housing crisis, a mental health crisis, a substance abuse crisis. And there's a moment in time when we meet them that they've just been arrested. And they have a moment where they're looking to change their lives. And attorneys, we simply do not have the time, uh, to navigate really the landscape for resources in our, that are available in our community. I think we'd all agree we could use some more, but we do have some. And if we could help tap them into their, uh, substance abuse, whether it's housing, transportation needs, et cetera, that helps them get to court, helps them get through their case and hopefully not commit other crimes. I've been vetting this, uh, position for a long time. I've talked to a lot of public defender agencies across the country. This is very commonplace. State law in Colorado requires them if you're gonna take juvenile, uh, public defender's office have to have one, um, if they're doing juvenile defense. So it's a means by which we can hopefully reduce some of our numbers and assist our attorneys. We do so much advocacy work out there. We just simply don't have the time to do it and it gives us a, a chance to, to work on our cases. So those are my budget priorities this time. And I, sorry, I'm not quite sure how this kinda got, slipped through the cracks, but I'm here available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eric. And I was going by the budget summary when I was going through the, uh, FTE request as we go through your budget. You do have additional one point five that you, that you've got written down there. One of the things I voiced during the budget process, I think we did approve the halftime. Same thing for, for Mr. Vargo. And that's something you advocated for last year also, and we didn't do. So I'd probably open that up for discussion as far as the, the, the one full time that you're talking about. Just from my point of view is, is I'm kinda waiting, would like to see how the MacArthur grant and how that all works and do it, because there's supposed to be some case managers and, and people that help in that area. And I don't know if that could also work into your, your side or not yet. Just a thought.
Lloyd?
Yeah.
Ms. Julie.
Yes, I would like to point out that between Eric's office and mine, I did not catch that there was an additional FTEs. But the entire cost of those one and a half FTEs, if you look at the budget, is included in that. So any change you make would be a reduction, an approval of the, the correct, the number that you desire, plus, but it would be a reduction to.
Okay.
To the original draft one. Because, do you know what that added to your budget?
The, the salary we had listed is forty-one thousand, three ninety-one plus benefits. So.
Only for what?
For the, are you asking for just the caseworker?
No, I'm for both.
Both of them. So the attorney, half-funded attorney would be thirty-three thousand, five hundred. The caseworker is forty-one thousand, three ninety-one plus benefits. And I'm sorry, I didn't break that out, so.
Okay.
That's added into your, okay, it's, so it's in, in the budget that we're discussing.
Yes, I missed pulling that out.
And I still go back, Eric, to my question about, uh, the MacArthur grant. You know, I, I know this is the route that we have to do to reduce the numbers in our jail and reduce the residences and so forth.
I, you know, the, I think the MacArthur, uh, of course, FT are, are terrific. Largely, they are not going to be, this is quite a bit different than what I'm talking about here. My understanding is those FTEs will largely be in the restoration center for people who are having acute needs. What this would be is for our six thousand clients that we service and to get them connected with the resources that are available in the community al- already. That, and so that's what this would be for. I, I'm not sure that there's gonna be a whole lot of overlap. I, I mean, there might be a slight, but this is something that would be different that could help our clients immediately when they come in and when they're having that, that moment of, of looking at change.
Okay.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
Just a question for Julie. So, um, not just on Eric's, but when long-term employees leave, is there not a net savings with hiring new ones? Or is it, I mean, is it because we already know if they have kids and all that for insurance? But, um, just for where they start on the scale compared, or do we have payouts or, or? How come that doesn't change on a lot of people's budgets? If you're losing, like in your department, you're leaving, you're losing two of your long-term. Is that, is there a payout or something in there that makes it so it's not a big change? Or, or Eric, aren't you losing a couple of people too?
Well, yeah.
Let's, first question was to Julie.
If I may. When you know you're going to lose a long-term employee, which I did, I can budget for those payouts. That's per current policy and that wasn't changed in the revision. However, if you, and when you hire a new one, depending upon how much overlap, a lot of the departments have overlap hiring. You just approve that basically for Mark. Uh, we have it in dispatch, I believe. We may have it in some of the law enforcement, which means you hire them before the other person leaves. According to your wage policy, everyone's hired at step one.
Right.
And then you can give them so many raises in the next twelve months. That's under policy. So if you know of the departure, you can budget for it, which you would see a raise. If not, the majority of the departments payout is then covered by the less salary that you pay a new employee. I don't know, um, and it depends upon the payout, depends upon how long-term your employee is. On a new employee or someone under five years, the payout is minimal. And they're probably already only at step one or two. So you're not gaining a lot because of the wage compression, if, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Okay, Eric. Do you remember what the question was?
Yeah, looking at that, I think it was kind of unique with that twenty-sixteen budget cycle. I think we've lost now four employees who were with us about over twenty years. So it just, you know, like Arnie Lobach, for example, I think was making eighty-some thousand dollars, eighty-five or something. And now, um, you know, the new position hired for that is sixty-five. So it's a twenty thousand dollar difference with just one FTE. But, so with our budgets, it, it ended up adding up to a fair amount of money.
So you're like three down and then you're asking for one and a half more?
I'm, I'm down, I'll be down three attorneys in July. We're down two positions right now. We're asking for a half-funded FTE. And it's not that I really, I frankly want twenty attorneys. It's so that I can for sure guarantee I'm gonna have a spot come next August when they've graduated and taken the bar. So that I can fund them through the back half of that year and potentially the first half of the next year if I didn't lose a single person. We've on average lost three attorneys every year since, since I've been here as the director. And I just think that's what we're gonna continue to see. I was looking at our, so I'm not really, I don't want twenty attorneys on staff. I really don't have room for twenty attorneys on staff. I'm trying to get close to nineteen. That's, that's what this priority is all about and why I'm asking for that half-funded FTE. Does that make sense?
Yes, so. It, for me, it's either the attorney or the, that's my person, I'm fin- or the resource coordinator. It seems like the resource coordinator, I'm, I'm in agreement with what kinda Lloyd is saying, that there might be some of that resource coordinator, uh, position, some of that funded through some of that MacArthur and other grants that we're getting. And I'd like to see if that can happen before we fund him another, uh, FTE for them. And maybe I don't understand the positioning. You can, you can have me describe what a resource coordinator for you is different than, than, um, what's happening in Vargo's or Health and Human Services.
Okay, looks like I'm gonna get some clarification from Barry.
Good morning, Barry Tyes, the Director of Health and Human Services. I think, uh, Mr. Witcher and I can have a conversation about how we might be able to fill some of those pieces when it comes to housing, um, getting people coordinated with services. That's our, that's our expertise. And so we, we might be able to fix some of those, uh, issues. I don't know if that's.
Mm-hmm. What, what I would say is these resources have been available in the community always. The problem is when we're running around with our hair on fire as attorneys, we know that these needs exist. We don't have the time to, to take them, give them that warm handoff to wherever they need to go and to assist a person, all those things. So we do a lot of advocacy as lawyers right now to do these things. It's just we, we simply don't have the time. And so I, you know, as far as asking for another attorney, we can, I think we can much more efficiently provide those services in-house if we had this position. As far as the, 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 the attorney aspect of it, I mean, if you wanted to just give me the FTE and not the money, I would probably, I would be okay with that. Because like where, where we haven't been able to maintain employment, so like the same thing with Mark, Mark didn't ask for the funding for the FTE just so he can go make the. Mark didn't ask for the funding for the FTE just so he can go make the request of the offers this fall. So I think he's asked for a a funded FTE for an attorney, I believe. I'm not sure, I missed his presentation, plus requesting so that he can make an offer in the fall.
See, this is, this is my thought. Is is I think, I think you're absolutely right with the halftime employee because we did that with Mark. You need to be able to get that person here. I think that's what we come across. I think with your advocate position that you're asking, from my point of view, I think that's why we got, we're going across the street. You can refer him over there. We're gonna have a multitude of people that could could help them out with with those crises that they have and be able to get those informations. I think I think that's kind of what Barry's saying, because I've seen a lot of these programs that have got the caseworkers coming in and and that type of thing. So I mean, I applaud you for wanting to step forward and and do it in house. But I think the whole idea is working together to get them to do it.
Okay, Chairman, I'm ready for a motion.
Do you wanna make your motion?
Yes, sir, uh fund the half FTE thirty three five.
Motion's been made.
Yes, sir.
I'll second for discussion. Discussion, Mark, did you have something that looked like you wanted to?
Uh Mr. Chair, it didn't have to do with the FTE. It's the same question I've asked everybody other department head when they presented their budget. You're asking for twenty thousand dollars in travel, and I wanna know where, when, and how many people are going.
Well, our travel, part of it is to state bar CLEs when they're available, usually in Sioux Falls or Pierre. Um also, and we try to send as many staff members as we can. There's also our attorneys uh for their CLEs. We also, from the defense side, there is um the National Association of Criminal Defense Lawyers Organization. They put on trainings throughout the country. We typically send uh three to four uh attorneys to those uh per year. There is also a um national NIDA, the National Institute of Trial Advocacy. They put on a week long seminar on how to try a case. So I try to send um a person to that if I if, yeah, yeah, they're they're very expensive there. Um and then also there is a Trial Lawyers College in Wyoming. Uh Jerry Spence organization has put those on. We've sent people there as well. Those are the general places that we send.
How many do you normally try to send to Sioux Falls?
Well, like this year for the state bar, I think we had seven or eight that went.
Okay. Where are these uh national association, where they normally held?
They're held all over the country. So um whenever it's in Denver or or in Las Vegas, we try to send a lot of people because we can get there with a lot less. We can either drive or the flights can oftentimes be less. If they are, sometimes they're not there. And so it's, you know, whether it's San Francisco, Miami, Chicago, so.
Alright.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to approve the half employee.
Excuse me?
Ms. Julie.
I don't know how to apply that motion because the numbers are included already for one and a half. But the way you said you're going to fund the half for thirty three five, since I've got the one and a half included, I don't know how much to take out.
You said thirty three five, I thought.
Yeah, but it's already all included. And so unless I can tell, he can tell me how much to reduce it by, we have to work his opposite.
Okay, so.
So the, what your motion you made makes no sense to draft one.
Okay, so in order to not have one FTE, only half, tell me what the motion should be.
He's requesting one and a half.
Right, and we're saying a half.
So Eric, what's your cost for the one and a half?
The the caseworker FTE, what we had budgeted for is forty one thousand three hundred ninety one.
But that's the one you're approving?
No, the half, so.
Thirty three five.
Oh, I would reduce the in, that increase in your budget by forty one?
Right.
Okay, if I could have the motion say that.
The motion maker.
What she said.
Okay.
And does that include the overlap hire, which is what we called Mark's, if unfunded?
That's what the halftime person is is, does that include that, Eric? You take that forty one out, that's for that, the social.
That's for the caseworker.
The remainder is for the the half, half attorney.
But are you allowing him the additional one overlap unfunded? That's not included in the motion, I need a clarification on that.
Okay, so then just do that, I guess, how you do it. I don't know how you do it in a motion, the one overlap is not included.
If I.
Go ahead, Julie.
You wanna fund one overlap F, unfunded FTE? And you're. I'm asking.
It's a, no, it's one half of an overlap funded by the thirty three thousand.
In his budget submitted in draft one, we're one and a half people.
Which is seventy four thousand. Then we're taking off the forty one thousand because we don't want that one person, that would be the resource director. Then we're going to fund the half attorney for the thirty three five and then.
So you're saying.
Reducing his budget.
You only had forty one thousand dollars in your budget for a full.
Well, that's the sal, that's the salary. So what the benefits would be?
On the forty one thousand.
I I don't know what the benefits exactly would be broken down for that.
So in the end, we reduce the forty one. You had seventy five thousand in there. And you're approving a half an FTE, that's it, for forty one thousand.
No.
No.
For thirty.
Thirty three.
Three.
So just a clarification. Okay, so the whole thing was seventy four thousand, that's what you said increased. The thirty three was for half and the forty one. And Julie, you're saying that it doesn't have the whole amount of the first FTE in it?
It does. That's why your motion to add thirty three five doesn't make sense to me. I need to make a reduction of forty one. And you're approving one half additional FTE funded at forty one thousand. And the reduction, no, funded at thirty three, so I'm gonna make a forty one thousand dollar reduction to draft one.
That, I guess, I I said reduction, but okay, it's all good.
Julie, and you and you are clear?
Yes.
Okay, you clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All in favor of the motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks.
Next we come to, we're coming back to budget. As I said, we started out the budget with the direction of starting point. We've done the FTEs now, we still have got two more to go through. We'll do on July third. Look for the board. There's some discussion at break time that they may have a motion to bring forward. My goal, my goal is is to reduce, since nobody's saying anything, reduce the tax uh tax cut in half. And I think the way we'd get to that, so that would be instead of a four point.
Two point four seven would be one point two five, one point two. So one point two five?
Hold on.
One point two three five.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will, what I can do, if that's kind of the consensus, so you have numbers for that, I can make that cut to tell you what you would have to need for a nineteen percent reserve? Or are you reducing the projections on that? Just so you have a point to go forward, it's hard to do that for Cindy.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mr. Busker.
Before before we start refiguring things, uh if we're going to reduce that two point four seven, then I'm gonna make a motion to review all of the uh FTEs. I'm I'm, I voted to have the FTEs based upon two point four seven reduction. And if we're gonna change that, then I wanna vote on all the FTEs again. And I'm gonna warn you that the vote was three to two in all of them last time, so.
I'll second that.
That's, if we're gonna do that, then we're gonna go back and look at all of them again. That's what I wanna do.
So Chairman.
Was that a motion or was that a?
It's a motion.
That was a comment.
Find out what we're gonna do.
Okay, then let's wind up, it was more of a comment.
So the total of those FTEs were three thirty nine something back when we first did it, but we didn't include Eric's in there.
It was included.
It was already.
Yeah.
Well, it was included in the budget, but meaning we didn't know we had one and a half more FTEs. So we did not give them one and a half, we only gave them half. So it increased, what, forty thousand? So you need about three hundred thousand. I don't know if that changes the two point four seven. I don't know.
As I said, I'd like some suggestions. My suggestion would be probably to where we're at, come up with some numbers, Julie, with the eighteen point five percent reserve, what and what we have. I think it's been very clear that uh we schedule another budget hearing after the July third, when we hear the rest of them and.
I would say that's probably necessary.
And then we could, I think between the commissioners, between that timeframe, I think uh commissioner's gonna ask the question, they'll get some of the numbers. And I would suggest after those budget hearings, then we come back and maybe have some suggestions to move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Busker.
I I'm not trying to be a hard nose, but I liked their original one that Julie put out here with the, where we reduced the budget by a million dollars. Now we wanna stick a whole bunch more back in there again, and I'm not big with that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Second.
I'm in agreement with Ron. We were voting on these FTEs based on our assumption that we were sticking with the two point four seven at nineteen percent. And that, you know, if we're not gonna stick with that, then we need to look at it again.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
They actually reduced the FTEs, so are we still sticking to the two point four seven even if we did uh reduce the FTEs? I think we should be fair and look at where we reduced, and maybe it didn't change it, maybe two point four three. But let's look where we reduced and then take off Eric's as well for the total amount and then see where we're at. So maybe it's still at two point six, two point four six. But um let's get to where we're at, guys, with the FTEs first before we say it's at two point four seven. We don't know where it's at now, but you see what I'm saying, Buskers? Cause we reduced those FTEs as well.
Okay. Go ahead, Ron.
Anyhow, who you wanna be fair to? You wanna be fair to the taxpayers, you're gonna be, you know? It's, I I I don't, I don't care. I think we probably need Julie to go back and look at all the numbers and see where we're at. And yes, if it changes two or three tenths of a percent, then I'm not so excited about that, but.
Yeah.
Half of it.
Basically, what I can do is make these corrections that you've made today. Add in the over, the um stored CPI for Fire Fund, which was the motion. These FTE reductions that you made today. And the direction from the board previously was to figure out what that cut was, to not use stored CPI.
Where were our reserves, Laura, Julie, at that time?
At nineteen percent.
Yeah.
At two point four seven? Okay.
And I, that's what I can prepare for the next one.
Yes, and.
Okay.
Let's do that, and like I said, then we, let's come to the next meeting. Not after July third, but after that, I would like to have some options to vote on, two to three.
And then you'd need to set that so we can.
Yeah, we'll have to set that meeting. Do, Holly, do we need to set that next meeting today?
Budget hearing.
Next budget hearing. That would be the best, that is while everybody's here.
The only complication, I guess, if you're gonna go. If you're gonna have your hearing on July third for the court budgets, you could go the next Tuesday, which would be July tenth. But do you have the ability to fix those numbers in a matter of hours to get it back, to put it on the July seventeenth agenda?
Depends upon how complicated they are. What I I can change quickly change, or Cindy will be able to quickly change the percent of tax cut. And then on the means of finance, she can see what the percent of reserves it will produce.
Okay, so if you schedule it on July tenth in the morning, Cindy would have approximately a day and a half to get those numbers updated and ready to go to put back in the packet for the next meeting on the seventeenth.
On the seventeenth, we need to have a provisional budget.
Approved unless you're gonna schedule another special meeting after that.
But like as I said, provisional, we can pass and still work on budget if we need to.
Correct.
Okay. So that's our goal. So we're looking at the tenth. Am I right, July tenth?
Yep. Yep.
Commissioners, is anybody?
I might not be here, but I'll, I need to check my schedule, so I'll be here for the third now, July third meeting. So thank you, Ms. Holly. I rearranged it so, cause I didn't think we were having.
Oh.
Need theirs.
So is everybody in agreement on July tenth?
Yep.
Okay. Consensus is July tenth, so we'll.
What time?
Nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay. With that lined out, I'd look for a motion to recess.
I motion.
Can you make that meeting a motion in most of the courts?
Okay, we can do that. Motion, I need a motion to set a budget hearing for July tenth at nine AM.
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by Busker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we need a motion to recess to July tenth, or July third, probably. To July third.
July third.
Yep.
My motion.
Moved.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto, all in favor of recess, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
You opposed?
No, 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 I.